I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Shall we call a roll, please?
Mr. Bradley?
Here.
Mrs. Butcher-Cromway?
Here.
Mrs. Singer-Urdley?
Here.
Yeah.
Mr. Lesby?
Here.
Mr. Shawalter?
Here.
Mrs. Tackett?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Mrs. Tingle-Sames?
I did have a chance to exchange Texas text with Ms. Sames today, and she is under the weather. It sounds like that abdominal bug that none of us want, and I encouraged her to stay home and feel better. So Karen is under the weather tonight, or she would be with us. Each of you in your packet should have a copy of the minutes from our last regularly scheduled meeting made. If you'd like to take a moment to look those over for any possible corrections or additions.
I make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Questions been made and seconded. If there are no questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Also in your packet, and boy, I apologize for the length of this packet, given some of the issues that we have to work on tonight, you've got a packet that's in excess of 250 pages long. It was a pretty thorough effort to put it together, and it's a pretty thorough effort for you all as well. But in that packet should have been a copy of our latest check register. If you could indicate that you received a copy of that check register. Thank you. And that gets us down to the portion of our meeting that we dedicate for public comments. During this time of the meeting, we folks sign up, and we'll call people to the podium based on the order in which they signed up for public comments. We like for each of our citizens to have the time that they need, but if you can hold your comments to the four to five-minute range, it's helpful for what looks to be a very long council meeting tonight. But we would begin, the first person to sign up for public comments is Mr. Warren Price.
Mr. Price, I'm pleased to have the honor and the freedom to speak, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Price.
I was blessed to be raised by a handicapped dad and was taught humanity comes first by rules of the Bible. This trait has been passed on to my sons, I'm proud to say. Birds and feathers flock together, so do people, fishermen, golfers, hunters. And since a year ago, I have had the experience of being classed in the handicapped field. We share our pains, our injuries, chances of recovery, what we've had to give up, being self-efficient, medical bills, no income, and how our godly friends came to us with no whole spark and then humanity rescued us and our mental stress. When I go out in public in Georgetown, proud to say, I feel so protected by the citizens of Georgetown in humanity. If someone attacked me, only the thing I would need the police for is to rescue the ones that attacked me. We have that much humanity here, especially if a trained soldier had been trained in humanity. As a finance, I have never had a credit card and didn't have a bank account for seven years, and I can't borrow one penny. My operation was a year ago in July. I haven't been able to pay a penny on my operation, and I go Wednesday for x-rays. The council and mayor are elected by the people, the elite of Georgetown. Purpose is for the people, by the people. The public has humanity. The big Toyota budget that we have blessed, probably best town in the nation blessed with Toyota, conquered the world's market with automobiles. And the Bible speaks, the love of money is a root of evil. It's blinding. It can kill humanity. Parable of a soldier of humanity that was here in Scott County. One of our good citizens was captured with a group, put in a room, dirt floor, fenced in. Koreans would come in and cut off a leg to get them to talk, come in and cut off an arm to get them to talk. They had a shovel, and they dug, was able to dig a trench. And when the last one came around, the Koreans, they said that was the time to escape. One of them that had the leg cut off said, "Leave me behind. I'll slow you down." Louis Oliver said, "No, no, you're going with us." And was the last, and let the others go ahead and drug him through that hole and put him on his shoulder and running and them shooting at him. This is humanity at the first degree. Wanting really to die for the others. This is what our soldiers, we sluted the flags, have done for us. Excuse me just a minute. Not a soldier died for a big, pretty house or $400,000 dog budget, but they died for humanity and for freedom. My truck, Mayor, that you have, you may find the bill sales in the glove compartment. I had no way of capturing it. I'm broke. It's got a Toyota motor in it, 220 RE, that they captured the world's market trade with it. About $1,500 value in the motor. That was what I was trying to get going to have to gain my independence to feed my cattle in. Proverbs 22, 22 and 23. Do not exploit the poor because they are poor, and then do not crush the needy in court, for the Lord will take up their case and will plunder those who plunder them. I read this every morning, first thing, to handle the stress that the city has brought on me in this. I wasn't at the point of handling, how much stress can I handle? The patriotic humanity believers in Georgetown will know on election, I'm shooting for you, put a budget for hardship people. Will know election day if there is any budget for hardship Christians, citizens. This will be a big issue, election day, hear me. It'll be a big issue. Because that's what the Georgetown people believe in. All the churches help people in their church. That's the foundation and soul of our being, caring for one another, the foundation in this country. I've never got a law passed that I didn't have to be the victim of living evidence. I'm standing before you. This is never hard, easy for me to do, but I have to do it for the soldiers. They have died for our humanity and for the Georgetown citizens that is in hardship. United we stand, divided we fall. I hope and pray that God Almighty will never let me get low enough and common enough that I will take something off of somebody's back that's weak, weary, and heavy-hearted. Amen, and I ask for your prayers and ask you for us to make us a better place in Georgetown and not overlook this situation. Either you'll recognize we have them, or you say you don't care. You're gonna say one way or the other, and we'll settle it on election day because we'll know whether it's gonna be in the budget or not.
Thank you, Ms. Price. Next on the public sign-in sheet is Amy Preston with Habitat for Humanity.
Thank you, Council, for giving me a few minutes. As Mayor Prather said, I'm with Scott County Habitat for Humanity. We've been in Scott County 27 years, building homes, changing some of the downtown area, trying to make a big difference in our community, but a big difference in families' lives. What I wanted to talk about, and I'll try to keep it short. I brought a big board. We own this land off of Hickman Street. We own this L shape here. All of this is brush and trees right now. This is our proposed development. Right now, Scott County is building two homes in, Scott County Habitat's building two homes this year on the last two lots that we can use. So we have nowhere to build next year unless we can develop this area here. And our big area of concern is right over here. We own this land, yeah, if you want to hold. We own this land. There are storm sewer drainage issues here where the water just pools. This is a housing management home. It's not a Habitat home, but it floods every time that it rains. If the city can help Habitat take care of the stormwater drainage issues in this area for all these houses around here, we can be able to build, and that will improve this area greatly, and we can help with the issues. But we need a little, we need, can you explain? Herbert Engineering knows this better than I do.
Thank you, Council. Real quick, I'll be brief. I know everybody's on a tight time schedule. But basically, what we're saying is, prior to this, there's already been a drainage issue in the Boston community. And what we are proposing is, this is a mutual benefit. So not only are we going, this project right here, this subdivision, this proposed subdivision, is also, not only will it house 15 individuals that are low-income and help them, it also is going to alleviate the drainage issues in this area. And I'm not saying partial, I mean completely. Because right now, what it's doing, this area right here has got a watershed of about 32 acres that's draining into there. And in 2010, you guys had a pretty bad storm, about four inches of rainfall in a 24-hour period. And if you concentrate that and there, within one hour, you'll have filled up two and a half Olympic-sized pools. That's in one hour. That's how much rainfall will come into this area. And so by proposing this, and with some financial support with the city, we can alleviate this and help expedite and build this subdivision for Habitat for Humanity. So it's a win-win for everybody. The city resolves some of their drainage issues, and 15 deserving families get their first home that they worked and give hope for, for the future. And that's what we all want. Thanks, community.
Thank you. Not paid staff, just a volunteer, but he's got it.
Council's aware that years ago, we developed the city and Habitat together, developed Habitat Village over in the Boston neighborhood, which was a different type of process from a lot of Habitat initiatives. Habitat Village gave us a chance to lump together these Habitat homes, where frequently, they're scattered.
Right, depending on lots.
And the new street, the new subdivision that Habitat has proposed, we think has a lot of merit and a lot of benefit. The difficulty for us and for Habitat is that the site does need some remedial action, particularly at the end where Amy was pointing, where the housing management. What was the name of the organization, Amy?
It was Housing Management at the time. It's now Housing Authority, but whatever predated.
It was never the Housing Authority.
Okay.
It was an offshoot, an ill-fated offshoot of the Housing Authority that failed miserably. And they built that drainage problem.
They built that problem.
They made that problem what it is today. Habitat has approached us, and they've got some real detail. With their Brad Engineering's help, they developed some very specific cost estimates. What they are asking of the city is a $75,000 contribution to help with this storm sewer issue. Frankly, Amy, it is not in our current draft budget. In my many years with city government, I've rarely seen us go from $0 to $75,000 that fast in one budget document. I thought the Council needed to learn more about Habitat's project and their longer-term goals. And once we understand that, maybe you all can go visit the area, and then we can have a future conversation about this particular allocation. So I had really encouraged Amy when we were all together in my office that Council needed to be aware of Habitat's current level of activity, which is very ambitious, and that's good for us.
What does the project to get rid of the water drainage cost? What's the total project? Amount of money that it's gonna take to clear that project up?
Well, it depends. And if you're talking about the subdivision itself.
Talking about where we're talking about.
Is the problem area?
Yeah, that's where you were talking about, what it may, in that area right then.
Well, now, see, you just couldn't isolate it in one because what has happened here, if you see below this Habitat Village down here, all the storm infrastructure is leading into a pipe that goes underneath Hickman Street, and it's basically coming into here. And then, now, what this house is doing, it's making it worse. It's kind of making it a detention pond right here, kind of slowing it up. And so then, what is happening is Martin Luther King Avenue is acting, basically, it's a spillway. So it's just going over top of it every single time. And we documented, just in March the 2nd, I believe, miniscule amount of rain. And we've got some pictures we'll give to anyone that would like to review it a little bit more in detail. But just with the miniscule amount of rain, how much ponding and pooling is already happening in this area. And due to that fact, plus further damage to Martin Luther King with some of that rain coming over on top of that, and road hazards. I mean, there's quite a bit of issues and to the damage of, not only here, as, you know, as the rain goes, that water's gonna eventually come over and come back over this direction as well. So not just this area.
But to answer your question, I think immediately, the estimate was about $75,000 to just.
Take care of that.
To take care of that, to get water to start running off. And as we build, we will have to grade and then put in.
But you'll have to, yeah. But you'll have to go to a certain point to be able to catch it.
To catch it.
Because right now, it's just flowing through land freely, just wherever it may enter.
How many lots are you proposing?
15.
15 homes.
And then, how much acreage is there?
2.2.
Yeah, 2.2. We started, just this year, about a month ago, we've started this house. We were able to build here because this was all farmland, and there was an original farmhouse that used to be here years ago, so we had sewer. But once we're finished, we can't build anywhere else until this is taken care of. Because we don't want to change any of the land and have it worse for anybody down here. So we're at a point.
So if any money falls from the sky, we can.
Because we love Georgetown. I love Habitat. It's just an awesome organization, and I don't want to close. We want to keep going.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you all very much for the presentation. And Council may have some follow-up questions or want to take a look at that. Millie, I think you've been involved in a build.
It's a very good cause. Have been.
All right. Amy, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Amelia Clout.
Good evening. Thank you very much. I'll be the shortest comment person so far. I just have an invitation for you all. You know I'm always involved in so many different things. I'm wearing the hat tonight of Kentuckians of the Commonwealth. Our, one of our spin-off groups and committees is Georgetown Fairness, and we are having an ice cream social on June the 3rd down at Royal Spring Park. And it'll be from 1:00 in the afternoon until 3:00, just a short event. And we're gonna have ice cream and ice cream sundaes. And we just came in and would like to invite you all to come. So I just have a postcard to hand out to you. And if you can come, you're interested in learning more about fairness or just getting an idea of what we're doing in the community, we'd be happy to have you come.
Thanks.
Thank you, Amelia. Last night, I was getting married that day, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy, again. Next, we have two students that I think are gonna tag team. We have Jackie Johns and Emily Evans from Georgetown College. Council's received some information from these students considering conflict-free minerals. Oh, thank you.
Yes, so Emily is passing out some sample resolutions and company reports that you all can pass around while we speak. But I want to thank you all for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Jackie Johns, and I will be starting the discussion of potentially passing a conflict-free resolution in the future. Emily will be speaking after me, so if you have any questions, if you would refrain to ask them until after she speaks, that would be great. I am the campus organizer of the Conflict Free Campus Initiative, known as CFCI, on Georgetown College's campus. CFCI is not unique to Georgetown, however, as this initiative is scattered throughout the country and even in the UK with hundreds of schools participating in the last seven years. I know that we have provided a quick background of the conflict in the Democratic Republic of Congo to each of you in the past, but I wanted to give another short overview as this is why we are here. The conflict in the DRC is the deadliest conflict since World War II. Over 5.4 million people have been killed, millions more displaced, countless children recruited as soldiers, and women and little girls raped. As rape is used as a weapon of war by these armed forces, DRC is referred to as the rape capital of the world. The armed groups fighting, who commit these atrocities against whole communities and innocent civilians, are fueled by the illicit mineral trade. And the minerals, tin, tungsten, tantalum, and gold are all used in our electronics products. Our goal, though, is not to boycott electronics or engage in divestment from companies. That is actually the opposite of what needs to be done is we are not trying to pull resources from the Congo. Rather, we need to prioritize companies who are trying to clean up their supply chains and who are sourcing from conflict-free mines within the Congo. The nice thing for us is that this information is not hard to find. Section 1502 of the Dodd-Frank Wall Street Reform and Consumer Protection Act requires companies publicly traded in the US who use products that contain any of the foreign minerals mentioned earlier to publicly disclose whether any of these minerals originated in the DRC or its neighboring countries, and if so, to report their due diligence practices to determine the source of these minerals. Legislation, as well as the efforts of activists and NGOs like the one that our initiative falls under, have been instrumental over the last few years in creating transparency mechanisms and certification systems to differentiate conflict minerals from conflict-free minerals. The price for certified conflict-free minerals is now risen above the price for untraceable conflict minerals, so the illicit mineral trade by these armed groups is no longer as profitable. Therefore, they are pulling out of these mining communities, and as a result, 79% of miners working in the tin, tungsten, and tantalum mines in eastern Congo no longer work under the threat of armed groups. And over 75% of the world's smelters and refiners for the foreign minerals have passed conflict-free audits. Since all of this is amazing progress, I understand if you question why a small town like ours needs to pass a resolution. The thing is, the Conflict Minerals Law does not require that companies source from conflict-free mines. It just requires that they report if they do or do not. Even further, the law is under threat in Congress right now. Reforms and laws can be reversed, but if there's enough pressure on companies coming from their customers, including institutions, cities, and states across the US, then they are much more likely to continue their efforts to source from conflict-free mines. Even with these improvements, work still needs to be done. More livelihood programs need to be implemented, and there are still many more mines under the control of armed groups. The more attention given, pressure created, and action taken can only help towards peace efforts in the DRC. So what can the city do? The city of Georgetown can pass a resolution similar to the one that the college passed a year ago, a reflective of those passed by other cities that states will purchase conflict-free products when available or prioritize those companies who are making strides towards tracing, auditing, and certifying their supply chains. In front of you, we have examples of the resolutions passed in other cities across the US. Because of the federal conflict minerals law, it is not difficult to find out which companies are doing exactly that. When we were working with the college administration to pass a resolution last year, we researched several of the electronics companies that the college had purchased from in the past and found that most were already implementing such policies. We've provided that information, which is in front of you as well. Also, the Enough Project is working on creating an updated company rating list, which will make it even easier to identify which companies to prioritize. Like I said, it is not difficult to find this information, and an office manager assistant may be able to take on this task. If not, then our organization would be happy to work with you in the coming months to research and provide that information. It is also important to note that a conflict-free resolution could actually help strengthen our city's procurement process and avoid future risks. Companies that do not care about where their minerals come from are likely to ignore other red flags in their supply chains. We could therefore be at risk of losing access to key resources or face crippling lawsuits. Lastly, I want to say, I know that there were concerns that this is foreign policy and something out of the city's jurisdiction or beyond the city government's purpose. Yes, we can dismiss it. We can say it is half a world away, but that is ignoring the role that we can and we should take as an organ that uses electronics products. This is about consumerism and ethics, both of which follow under the city's domain. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Emily Evans, and I have been a campus leader with CFCI for two years now. I want to point out that this is not something that just a few college students care about. We have several members of the community who have come today in support of the passage of a conflict-free resolution and others who wish they could be here but had prior engagements. Would those of you here in support of a conflict-free resolution, please stand? They are nurses, counselors, retired teachers, administrators, churchgoers, professors, reverends, and more. The members of this community care about this issue and want their city to stand up and say that it takes its role of influence and consumerism seriously. We have a statement from the Vice President of Student Life and Dean of Students Laura Johnson, who, along with the president, was the one we worked with last year to pass the college resolution. The following words are from Dr. Johnson. "I have been impressed at the dedication, initiative, and follow-through exhibited by the CFCI leadership on campus. They are passionate about their work, knowledgeable on the subject, easy to work with, and very reliable. You can rest assured they are true to their word and will follow through on any task with professionalism. Right now, we are asking that you simply be open to continuing to talk about this. As Jackie mentioned, the college administration found that many of its companies it purchases from already meet the requirements of the resolution, and we would not be surprised if the city follows suit. We would be happy to meet with you in the future, discuss any concerns or implications, and negotiate the language of such a resolution. Thank you for your time." and negotiate the language of such a resolution. Thank you for your time."
Thank you. We had, I think, most of you council members have been contacted at one point in time.
A lot of emails.
Yes, email. And certainly, they've made repeated approaches to City Hall. And as I had indicated to the council previously, that we're willing to consider a resolution. And if you all direct us to do that, we can have Andrew work with the students and produce a resolution. But I thought it was an idea the council needed to discuss prior to us drafting a resolution.
Andrew, do you see any harm or would there be any adverse effect on the city? Or, you know, businesses that the city does business with by passing a resolution?
It's been a couple of weeks since I've reviewed it, but my recollection is the resolution is largely symbolic, if not completely symbolic. It simply says that we, as a community, recognize that there's an issue. And that we encourage all of the businesses and encourage ourselves and hold ourselves to accountability in looking for the companies that do not support conflict minerals. But there's no prohibition, there's no penalties, there's no, you know, nobody gets hauled before an inquisition. It's simply a, it's really more, I mean, it's a true resolution. It's a statement of this body's opinion.
That's good. You know, if that's the case, I mean, I realize this issue is in the Congo. But in reality, this is an issue that's impacting Georgetown College and the students. And from my perspective, I'd like to do what we can to support their efforts. I mean, they're spending a lot of time, a lot of effort, and they're bringing folks in from the community. So, I don't see why we can't support a resolution if it doesn't create a negative or adverse effect on the city or the businesses that we do business with.
And I'm happy to review it again, and if I think that there's any language in there that needs to be even more narrowly tailored, we can work on that. But I'm happy to work with them and bring a copy of a resolution.
You have to admire their efforts, their tenacity. They haven't quit knocking on your door, so.
Now, and our response frankly has been real straightforward. This council's agenda has been incredibly large. We have had huge issues. Some of you with us tonight have been here for some of our big conversations. This council's been rather busy. And I was reluctant a little bit to divert attention away from what was a consuming local agenda for a largely symbolic gesture halfway around the world.
Well, I really think we probably need to, I don't have a problem thinking about it and looking at it, but I would like to get through our budget and stuff before we really do anything. I think we've got a very important issue in front of us to get that budget finalized, in my opinion. But I'm like David, I have no problem with it. But maybe after, maybe first of the year and a new budget starts in, we can do something.
I think we'd be happy to work.
Yes.
Given the council's, here mostly comments in support of the idea, we don't mind at all preparing a resolution and bringing it back. It was just, for me, it was a question of priorities. And our priorities had been rather difficult and rather full.
Is there anything about, there's no way, like, really it can be policed or anything, right? So, it's just pretty symbolic.
It is, it is.
And it's not, it doesn't relate to the factories here or the businesses here, right? It's just the city.
Yeah, just be our, it'd be the council's expression of concern, I think.
That's all it is.
What a resolution would say.
But it's not, it's not a forced resolution. You can't force anybody, but we're just saying.
It doesn't even tie our hands, honestly. It is a council's expression that when we go and we look for, if we have to buy a piece of equipment, that we should go and we should do our due diligence. I think that's the right terminology. And C, is this company the one that supports conflict minerals or not?
You know, and again, for me, it's, you know, the issue in, you know, out of this country is, I'm sure it's a very important issue. It's not one that I'm overly familiar with. To me, it's more showing the support for the students that are working on this project. So, I guess that's more where I'm coming from. And Andrew, I know you and the mayor have been inundated with task after task after task. And I agree, get the budget behind us. And if you've got a few moments to spare and you can put something together, I'm sure they would appreciate it.
Do, Jackie and Emily, do we have your own contact information?
It would probably be easiest to have our email rather than our address.
I have Jackie's email.
Yeah, Jackie's email, okay. Then let us proceed during May and part of June. We hope early in June to have this budget document finalized and adopted. So, perhaps by mid-June, a month from now, we're ready to undertake this.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Do you want to take this back? Are you leaving this with us?
It is up to you. Will you continue to look at it?
Yes.
Put the sample, we'd be glad to keep it. Thank you. Next on the sign-up sheet for public comment is Mr. Stephen Price.
Thank you, Mayor Prather, and the council for allowing me to speak. I'm Price, Stephen Price. I live at 167 Rucker Avenue in Georgetown. I'm here to renew my comments about noise. Noxious, what's called what the Kentucky Legislature refers to as noxious ambient noise. And I want to read you the findings of the Kentucky Legislature regarding noxious ambient noise. Noxious, obviously no, is something disagreeable. Ambient means it occurs in the average, everyday walking environment. M comes from the word, and Latin word, ambulate, I think, which means to walk. Noise, obviously, what noise is, anybody knows what noise is? Noxious ambient noise, 22430-100. Here, 22430-100. Excessive, the legislature of Kentucky finds and declares that excessive noise is a serious hazard to the public health and the welfare and the quality of life. A substantial body of science and technology exists by which excessive noise may be substantially abated. Every person has the right to an environment free from noise that jeopardizes the health or welfare or degrades the quality of life or lowers property value. It is the policy of the state to promote an environment for all people free from noise that jeopardizes their health or welfare or degrades the quality of life. I want to, I made a mistake. The noxious ambient noise is the generic subject that the legislature addressed here, and I thought the language was there, but it's not. But anyway, if you walk, if you're pedestrian like me, then you're going to experience ambient noise from a lot of illegal sources that our Georgetown Police Department is ignoring and the Code Enforcement Office. I don't know exactly what responsibility falls on the Code Enforcement Office for this, but I know a lot of the vehicular noise falls upon the police department, and they are ignoring it. Probably, in some cases, because they're too busy doing other things, which I perceive there are more life and death situations that sometimes require attention from the police. But if, I just want to cite, and I'll say this too. We have to all be careful. I wanted to talk to those people who left a while ago, so I stepped in the hallway out there to advise them, they were worried about stormwater. And I wanted to remind them of the Green Acres Program of the EPA that recommends stormwater control through vegetation and revegetation. And in addressing them out in the hallway, this fireman had to come and shut the door because I was making too much noise and he couldn't hear. So, that's one reason I don't use machinery, because I don't like being annoyed. And I'm sorry I annoyed this man with my noise. And if people would simply abandon machinery, they could make Georgetown a desirable place to live instead of an increasingly, I want to say, nightmarish place to live because of the noise. You may not understand what I'm saying, because you don't walk. But I walk or ride a bicycle everywhere. I stopped using vehicles years ago, mostly because I was spending all my time and effort in complying with KRS 189.140, which requires an adequate silencer on every motor vehicle in the state of Kentucky. And I told a man today, I bet you half of the vehicles on the streets of Georgetown are illegal because they don't have adequate solencers. And this occurs so frequently that I call, if I see a violation, I call the police. And the police are getting tired of it. As a matter of fact, I've had policeman Aaron Wilson told me if I called anymore to complain, he was going to do what he could to get me jailed. And I've had other policemen say, we don't want you, we're not going to, this is nonsense. Or this is, we've got bank robbers to catch. We're not going to be bothered with this piddly work of noise control. But I'm going to, I'm just going to, I don't want to take a lot of time. I'm going to say, I'm going to call your attention, KRS 189.040. And 043, you can't have strobe lights on vehicles unless it's a traffic emergency. They cry wolf, wolf, wolf. But there's no wolf unless there's an emergency. But your public work vehicles have strobe lights on. There was one out here today parked on, not in any emergency situation, not on a yellow line, not in the street, but the yellow strobe light was invading everybody's privacy, crying wolf, wolf, emergency, emergency. There was no emergency. If that continues, then people see those strobe lights and they say, well, there must not be an emergency because they have them on all the time. I saw a trash truck go around the corner today on the West Main off of South Broadway. Strobe light flashing, he put his left turn signal on. You couldn't tell if he even had that left turn signal on because of the strobe light. You don't, you can't tell whether the strobe light or the flashing or the turn signal indicator. To have those lights on when there's no emergency is illegal under KRS 189.040, 189.043. Going to 189.430, leaving a vehicle unattended, you can't be, under this statute, you can't be out of a vehicle with the engine running. You're supposed to take the key out, turn off the engine, and leave, and take the key, turn off the engine, and take the key with you when you leave a vehicle. That would make illegal remote starters. My neighbors across the street have a remote starter. I'm in front of my house, and all of a sudden, not only does the engine start from, with nobody around, but the horn blows every time they start the engine. That in itself, KRS 189.14, let's see, 189.080. You don't sound in the state of Kentucky, you cannot sound the horn unnecessarily. Is it necessary that somebody blow the horn to start the car? I don't think so, but General Motors and Ford Motor Company are forcing this off on everybody, attaching all these, making all these cars activate the starter, the keyless, so-called keyless entry. People can't get in or out of their cars without pushing what they call a fob, instead of using a key.
Steve, council has no jurisdiction over how those automobile manufacturers make their key fobs.
No, but.
And, just for the record, I have instructed our Public Works Department to absolutely run their flashing lights when they are moving those large vehicles through densely populated areas. I'm going to continue to ask them to do that. We're not going to stop doing that. I think it's in the public's best interest and safety that we do that. So, we're going to continue.
Well, that means that the private, just the local individual driving a heavy truck does not have the right to do that.
Steve, I'm not, I'm just, Steve, I'm not going to waste the council's time with this argument. We're not, I'm not going to tell Public Works to turn off their flashing lights.
Well, maybe I'll have to go to court then.
Yes, sir.
If the, if these issues, these vehicle violations are allowed to continue, think about what's going to happen if driverless cars come to Georgetown.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Price. Next on the agenda, we have mayor's comments. So, I'd be glad to have folks stick around for anybody that can tolerate that. Some may leave at this point. I would actually endorse that idea. But delighted to go over a few things with the council here. First off, for the council's benefit, in the back of the room, I'd like to introduce Ms. Amanda Kelly. With Georgetown News Graphic, she is new on board with the News Graphic. And Kelly Stokes, that used to cover council meetings, is no longer at the paper. And so, you may hear from Ms. Amanda Kelly to follow up on council stories. So, Amanda, glad to have you. Yes, ma'am. Let's see, just a couple of things. Great progress being made on the Ed Davis bathrooms. I am so proud of the way Parks and Recreation has responded to that challenge when we got no bids. But yet, we had made a hard promise to the neighborhood that we'd have all that ready. So, Parks and Recreation, along with some, the jailer helped us with some trustee labor, some of which is very skilled. And we are going to meet that deadline for the Ed Davis bathrooms. And just delighted to report that. By now, everyone knows that the city was very successful in receiving two grants over the last couple of weeks. Both our CMAT grant, which is congestion mitigation and air quality grant. That will be the one that focuses on Cardinal Drive. That grant amount was for just over a million dollars. Our match is $250,000. So, we're looking at $1.25 million worth of improvements to primarily the intersection of Cardinal and Longlick, where we can put in dedicated turn lanes. Chief, the goal here with this grant is to reduce police overtime, that we can make improvements to the intersection and not require as much police overtime as we have. There will also be a couple of improvements on Cardinal Drive, right in front of the two school buildings. I think right in front of their entrances. There'll be some three-lane improvements that should help with Cardinal Drive.
When will that take place, Mayor? Do you know the timing on?
I talked with the cabinet on Friday afternoon, and they said award letters and instructions were going out very quickly. So, we should have a green light to proceed once we receive the formal notification. We already had an engineer on board that helped us design the application. So, we're hopeful that that's a December improvement.
I guess their goal is to try to have everything complete, not to interrupt the school traffic?
Ideally. And Dr. Hub and I have talked, and we'll do the best we can to coordinate that.
That could be a little bit of an aggressive timeline, but we'll do our best. The design might take, it might take several months. And I guess I'm concerned that if we, it's a road project, there's a possibility that we run into.
Blacktop issues.
We run into, but, but the stuff with the traffic lights, it might be able to be phased, but.
We're at least on the path.
Yeah, that's good. Hey, that's a great, it's a windfall.
It's a windfall. The longer time horizon, I think, has been the grant that our West Main Street ladies, Polly and Billy, have been so anxious about. And we were funded on our TAP grant in the amount of $600,000. We had asked for $1.2 million in phase one. We agreed to take $600,000 with the hope that we could complete the engineering for the project, begin as much work as we can for the money that's been allocated. And then, if we've got the engineering ready, we're in much better shape for a subsequent year's grant allocation. That grant will require, it's a $600,000 grant, and it will require, I think, $120,000. That grant will require, it's a $600,000 grant, and it will require, I think, a $120,000 match. And Stacy has worked with the finance committee to reflect both of those matches in the new budget that we'll vote on tonight. So we have reflected that real-time information as much as we can. While we're on the topic of CMAC and TAP, it, I think it's a great time for me to, I'd like to let the council know that I've had a, a big change of heart about the priority that we've been placing on some of the questions that you've been asking. And I'm talking specifically about streetlights. Billy's talked about streetlights at length. Mark has talked about streetlights and long gaps where we have dark areas in town that simply aren't safe enough. Connie has ridden around with Sergeant Liddell, and every council member has talked to me about places in town that concern them. And council's been diligent about asking me questions about traffic lights, and when can we, and what is the process, and how much would this cost? The realization that I've come to is, we talk a lot about Georgetown believing that our number one priority is public safety. And we accept the fact that the responsibility of cities, the first responsibility of cities is public safety. We fund police, we fund fire, we fund ambulance, EMS, dispatch, all the above. I've come to accept the fact that streetlights are a part of public safety, just like the police department and the fire department are. So Chief Bossy, I wanted to make sure that you knew, that I wanted to make this statement to the council and rebel with the fire department. Robert, with Public Works, we've got eyes all over this town 24 hours a day. I think we need some processes changed, but mainly we need an awareness change of all of our people that, streetlights, we are going to consider as a key element of public safety, and we're going to work hard to get rid of those dark stretches that several of you have complained about for two years. So I've challenged Kyle with this. Kyle's already got a very substantial spreadsheet with all of our lights on it. We hope to come back to you very quickly with a map that indicates what your all's homework has told us and what our plan is for lighting up some places. So I would like to thank the council members for helping me realize what the true priority of this should be. We'll hear a lot more about streetlights with your all's help.
So you're saying you can see clearer now, right?
Yeah.
There's a light at the end of the tunnel.
There you go.
Or something like that.
Oh, you saw the light, David said.
We saw the light, and we realized that we can do better if we make it an equal priority to our other departments. This weekend, on Friday night, we will, we will start welcoming 3,000 guests into Georgetown.
Wow.
The Horsie 100 is this weekend.
Congratulations.
Last year, we had 2,700 riders from 31 or two states. Registrations are ahead of last year's at this point. We've got registrants from 38 states.
Wow.
We've got, we've got a crew of about 30 coming from Canada that apparently come every year. The events will kick off Friday night over at Georgetown College behind their fitness building. There'll be a stage, there'll be a band. The community is invited to all of these events. There'll be a band over at the college. There will be a vendor fair over at the college, and we're experimenting with this vendor fair, unlike the festival, which is simply open to any vendor. The vendor fair here will be a juried vendor fair, so it should have a higher caliber of offerings. Then all day Saturday, we're going to have cyclists, all day Saturday, all day Sunday, we'll have cyclists all over Scott County, Bourbon County, Woodford County. They've added Millersburg this year. They've added, let's see, Chief, it was Millersburg and several, it's a number. Stampin' Ground's participating, Sadieville's participating. We just want to remind our motors that we're going to have 3,000 guests in town on bicycles, and could we be, please be very safe and polite with them. So it's a, it's a big deal for us. And Saturday night will be the first party on the square, and typically, since it coincides with the Horsie 100, it's the biggest party on the square we have. So this coming weekend should be real busy and a lot of fun in Georgetown.
Mayor, can I mention one thing that hopefully will be helpful and something we've done in the past? It's impossible to clean every street, we know that, Chief, but in the past, we have tried to focus on some areas and get the street sweepers out, just to.
Grapple.
Get the gravel.
Bad for bicycles.
It's real bad.
It's running every day this week.
All right, all right.
It's very dangerous.
You'll also be glad to know that Chief Bossy, once again, has utilized the backups system, so we're going to have law enforcement officers from multiple communities. We hope that our guests will see an officer in almost every intersection they roll through during their ride, their time in Central Kentucky.
That's awesome.
Yeah, good stuff. Also, we have begun the process of selecting an engineering firm for the Lanes Run Business Park improvements. We did an RFQ and received qualifications from a number of firms, five, five well-done RFQs. We have put together a committee to help score those RFQs, and we've asked your finance committee to score those applications, so there's two council members looking at it. We've invited Jack Connor to be on that scoring committee, since he's responsible for the business park. Kyle is helping with that, and I believe Andrew's helping with that. So I am not on that committee, I am proud to say. And this is one of those great situations where we don't have a preferred company, we don't have any body pre-selected, we're just looking at the qualifications, and this committee will pick the one that we negotiate with. It is our, we held out a faint hope that we could have the RFQ scored and have negotiated with the company that we select and be able to bring you a proposal tonight. It became evident that that was simply moving too quick, and this is too important for us to move too quickly. So I ask everybody to slow down, take time to score their, the proposals that they've seen. Then we will negotiate with whoever is selected. We may wait three weeks to the next council meeting, but that's a little bit too long. If we can reach a consensus among the scoring committee and the finance committee, we may ask the council to come together for a quick called meeting next week, late this week, next week, when we can get together maybe for just a short meeting first thing in the morning and let folks go ahead and go to work, but let us make this selection so we can start the work. So for David Conny, y'all have got a lot of reading today.
We have. We've done it.
And you've done it. Last thing before I call, before I bring up Bob Willhite, is one of the things that Bob's going to ask us for is to approve a purchase order to Pico Incorporated, which is an environmental cleanup firm. And what I'd like to let the council know is that we spent a period of time, probably 10 days or longer, where we could not draw water from the Royal Spring because it was There was a sewer line break in Fayette County, I think the Coventry.
Coventry subdivision.
And raw sewage poured out. There was a slight delay in us being notified. There was an extensive delay with us being notified. And then the volume of the spill was pretty much underestimated during its early days. The spill was substantial enough to where we could not, we could not draw water out of the Royal Spring for water production. That meant that we had to buy finished water from Frankfurt. The big takeaway is that at no point were our customers given anything but pure water. We used the interconnect with Frankfurt, and during this period, we purchased finished water from Frankfurt. The difficulty for us is it cost us far more to purchase finished water than it does for us to finish water ourselves, far more, about $10,000 a day, more.
Wow.
And we had at least 10 days when we could not make water. So there's a minimum of $100,000 additional cost that we've incurred. We think after the big rains that the aquifer has flushed, although after yesterday's rain, there was just a little spike, but not, but within our testable limits. So we are now producing water again. We're monitoring the quality of the spring very carefully. As soon as we became aware of the incident, Bob Willhite has alerted Lexington authorities that we, we do expect a claim for all of our cost, increased expenses, and everything related to this incident. We will expect to be made whole by Lexington. And Charlie Martin and others have been put on notice that that's the case. So it was, it was startling to me when, when we thought the boogeyman was the trailer parks. We ended up getting polluted from a different source.
So did we detect it through our testing process, or were we notified prior to? We detected it on our own and then discovered, okay.
It's time for Bob.
Bob's up.
Staff at the water chief of the plant, they began noticing higher numbers than we normally see, and had started looking for this about the same time we got notified by Kentucky American. And they notified me immediately, and I told them to shut down and start buying water until we got this straightened out. It was, it was a huge spill. It was, I've never seen anything like it. But I do want to emphasize what the mayor said, at no time is there any risk to the public health. None of that bad water got into the plant. We immediately switched over to Frankfurt and Kentucky American and bought finished water. So our staff was on top of it.
What, what Pico has been doing for the water company is, as you visit Royal Spring Park, behind the wrought iron fence, there's the face of the creek, and then all the settling basins, the concrete settling basins. We've had to lower that and clean those settling basins, and that's why we had an environmental contractor do that for us.
Good idea.
Does, does the Coventry, does that gravity flow and decane run? Or where does, where do they gravity? You know, I'm guessing.
Yeah, there's a 30-inch force main in the back of that subdivision, and I'm not sure which way it goes, if it goes toward their tank on I-75 or it goes back into town.
Yeah.
But it fractured all along one length of pipe and was running, it created its own creek, was running down below the legacy trail under the interstate and the two sinkholes that go directly into our aquifer. So it was about the worst thing that could possibly happen, the worst location happened.
Yeah.
Are the sinkholes getting cleaned out, too?
Well, they would have been flushed out by the rain.
Rain should eventually flush out the aquifer.
The aquifer did come back very quickly. They patched the leak Monday, Monday week ago, today, and we were able to get back in production about midday Wednesday. So the aquifer did clean itself up fairly quickly, and we're, but we're continuing to monitor on an hourly basis to look for those amounts.
Part of the problem was, we, the thing was leaking, and apparently it's an odd-sized pump station. Parts weren't readily available, and I think they waited almost 10 days to get parts in before they could fix it. Meanwhile, our aquifer is getting fucked. So we're giving you this as a historical event and one that we are recovering from. We're hopeful that we're out of the woods now, but we have incurred significant expense because of it.
Right. And just what the purse drivers in you tonight from Pico is, just to exercise extra caution, we want to get any water and sediment out of the settling bases that may have been contaminated, because they do get, they're not exactly watertight, they get groundwater through them, and there's water moving back and forth. So just to be extra cautious, we want all those cleaned out and pressure washed, just to be extra sure before we went back to production.
Have we experienced, I've never heard of a situation of this magnitude, but have we had other situations where they were cooperative in reimbursement or compensation? Or is this just a whole?
Well, this is my first experience with the Urban County government. We've had other situations of benzene spills and gasoline spills where we were compensated through the party's insurance, so.
Do we have insurance as well, just as a safeguard?
Yeah, we do. I think, you know, that might be another route, but.
But our insurance wants them to pay, it's, I understand.
And, you know, it may be, if our insurance company has to pay, it'll be a subrogation.
Right.
But eventually, we think it's clear who's responsible.
Mayor, I understand you say that they knew it was leaking for 10 days and didn't notify us. Did they notify the state?
Yeah, they notified me, this happened sometime, sometime on the weekend, excuse me, the first weekend in May, something happened. It may have started as a small leak, and then it continued to grow. They did, you know, they did tell us, well, we have a leak, it's probably about 100 gallons a minute, and it's contained, but it wasn't. It was not contained, it was way more than 100 gallons per minute, and that could just be caused of a line continuing to break. The state was notified, they came down and made a report, and they went back to Frankfurt.
Chuck, I think our lines of communication could have been significantly better.
Not just from Lexington, we're talking about state, Frankfurt, didn't.
I wanted us to get through this little bit of a crisis mode, and then I think we've got a bunch of questions. So with that little bit of happy news, everyone, the good news is that we only sent out clear, pure water to our customers. The bad news is it cost us a lot of money to be able to do that.
But we hope to get reimbursed for it.
That we hope to get reimbursed.
Mayor, do you need approval for one?
Yes, ma'am, that would be a purchase order to Pico in the amount of $14,800.
Motion.
Second.
Bob, anything else to add on that particular topic?
I think that's enough.
We're good.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Second item, which might be somewhat easier than the first item for the first time in 19 years, is our budget for fiscal year '18. You all should have a copy of it, and there's a lot of detail, and I won't pretend to go through all of it, but I would like to hit some of the major points. The board did approve this budget on May 16th. Our revenues for next year are budgeted to be $10 million. Our revenues for next year are budgeted to be $10,201,600, which is an increase of $776,000 or 8.24% from last year. Our Fund Two revenues are budgeted to be $1,845,035, an increase of $87,333 or 4.97% from last year. So that means our total revenues are projected to increase $863,933 or 7.73%. On the expenditure side, our proposed budget for Fund One is $10,399,295, which is an increase of 6.55% from last year. Expenses on Fund Two will be $2,365,002, which is an increase of $113,690 or 5% from last year. And Toyota reimburses the water company for the expenditures for Fund Two. On the capital projects side, the budget includes $1,572,000 department requests for capital projects, which will be funded from revenues. Capital contributions from Toyota will provide $3,008,000 for capital projects at wastewater plant number two. We have vehicle replacement costs of $106,000, which will be funded for vehicle savings. And we also have major capital project requests, which totaled a little over $2.5 million. These will come from our depreciation count as funds permit or our existing line of credit. And if there's any questions, so try to answer.
Of course, we, we have to approve the water company's budget here since I'd like to remind Bob about weekly that we own the water company. They don't believe me every week, but actually we do.
But they do a great job down there for it.
Well, they get a lot of latitude because they do a great job.
I'll make most of approval.
Thank you. And a second? And if there are no questions for Bob? We'll call the roll on this one.
Mr. Bradley?
Yes.
Mrs. Spencer Comey?
Yes.
Mrs. Singer Erdley?
Yes.
Mr. Lesby?
Yes.
Mr. Showalter?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Bob. I left out one really important thing under mayor's comments.
Too late?
Too late. Kyle really doesn't want it to be too late. We, we had a, a really happy report for everybody on, on a rain garden that, that some students have worked with Kyle on. And it, it's the kind of thing we like to promote, we like to talk about. So Kyle, if you would update us about a happy amount with our rain.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. If you recall, last year you all approved a source water protection grant. And in light of today's news on the issues of Fayette County, makes sense that we have kind of a good side of it. Part of this source water protection grant was to install a rain garden. And Strand Associates helped, helped us with that. It's a little hard to see, but this image over here on the left kind of shows the Royal Spring recharger area into Scott County, into downtown Georgetown. And on this side, it shows the location of a sinkhole where we placed the rain garden, which is near Suffollette Memorial Park, actually right near one of the batting cages. This slide shows you the design, the plan that was laid out by Strand Associates. As you can see, it's a two-tiered system. Basically, water from approximately 15 acres flows into this, this area where this sinkhole is located. It flows through plants, vegetation, biomedia, and through filter fabric before it goes into the sinkhole and recharges into our drinking water. Got a few pictures here. This is two pictures of basically how we, we started out. I want to thank Rob and Public Works, they did a great job. Part of our match was, was helping out with the work. Public Works spent about three weeks out there digging and here's some more photos of them performing the work. They did a great job. We had some rain in between there, so it took a little longer than expected, but we were able to get it done. Finally, we had about a week, week and a half ago, we had Georgetown Middle School science students. About 130 students participated. They came out in four or five separate classes and helped plant the, the plants that went here in the rain garden. During that day, we planted about 1,000 plants.
Gosh.
So it was quite a bit of work. We were there from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, but we got it done.
When you say, notice that when he says until 8:00 PM, see the students leave at 3:00 PM. There were some adults that stayed.
That kept the students that long, we's in trouble.
Right.
Happy child labor.
So much, much thanks to Strand Associates. Lindsay McPherson, I know a lot of you have seen her present. She stayed there all day and helped, volunteered her time. Even she called her, her husband out because we were all tired. Her husband came out from Lexington to help us finish it off. Sharon Flint was there all day long. She did a great job in the extension office. We've got some more pictures.
That's pretty.
There's a lot, a lot of students involved.
Where'd the materials come from, like the rocks and the plants?
About 12 different vendors. We had nine different species of plants and it was difficult to nail them down at one nursery at one at a time. So we, it was a source, it was a challenge, expedition in sourcing, I would say that much. It took quite a while to get it, but we finally got the products there on time.
About the rock, where'd the rock come from?
Well, we had, we had Watchstone from Vulcan. I think they're out of Frankfurt. Can't recall the rest.
I was just curious.
Top my head. And let's see. So also we have these, these signs we're going to be placing here shortly. Permanent signage for people to come out and kind of understand what's going on. This, this sign will talk about what is a rain garden, how it works. It'll talk about the actual plants that are in the garden. And then the last slide talks a little bit about, you know, where water goes when it rains, when it goes into a sinkhole. How it recharges our aquifer, how the water treatment plant works to produce our finished water. And I just want to thank, GMWSS was a partner on this project. Obviously Georgetown Middle School. They're going to continue using these as activities every year. Obviously Public Works, the Extension Office, Master Gardener Program. They actually came out and helped with the students and teaching them how to plant and learn a little bit more about, about the rain garden. Parks and Recreation will be handling the long-term maintenance on it. And Division of Water and EPA Region Four provide the funding.
Good job.
Yeah, stop by some time, check it out.
It's the, it's the kind of balance that we wanted you to hear after the other.
Other one, yeah.
That, that we, you know, we have to take care of the bad and the good. But this, this was the kind of project that we hope gets a lot of attention.
Very good.
It's good that where it's located, I think. You know, being obviously close to school, but close to the ballparks, close to the cemetery. So.
We've had a lot of comments.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ah, let's see. Going down to item eight on your agenda, items listed under city attorney. We have been working a lot with the Public Works Committee. We, we've asked Marvin and Millie to come into City Hall and help us do a deep dive into the consultant's recommendations on solid waste. We knew step one was to exit the commercial Herbie business. And the next step was to work with the committee to look at the balance of the consultant's recommendations. And their thoughts on how we should move forward with the council. So I think after working with Marvin and Millie on, on the next step. We, we have an ordinance that we would like for the council to have first reading on at the next meeting. But we'd like to expose you to the content of the ordinance tonight so that you can have a couple of weeks to prepare for, prepare for first reading. Marvin, I guess the, the main things that we want to do with this ordinance are to establish the matrix for the commercial Herbies. And I'm, I'm pleased to report tonight that, that the committee's recommendation is going to be that we actually, if you have one Herbie and once a week pickup, that your cost actually goes down. Right now it's $22 and I think our recommendation is one Herbie for one pickup a week to be $20. So we start with a slight decrease if you can get by with one Herbie and one pickup a week. What the committee has really talked about, and I think we, we've been on the same page. But we wanted small business that uses Herbies to have flexibility to make the decision that was best for them. And if we, if we set our rate with, at the beginning rate of one Herbie, one pickup per week at $20. If you add another Herbie, it's an additional $5 for each one you add. And eventually we'll talk with you about residential Herbies, but we're not to that point yet. We wanted to take this in bite-sized increments. And then if you choose to do more pickups than one day a week, or you need more than one pickup a week. You can go across the matrix and you can pick the service that best meets your needs and your budget. So.
Oh, this is residential Herbies too?
Okay, good. All right. For residential Herbies, we, we're simply making the obvious decision to, if you have more than one Herbie, you have to pay for the second Herbie. And that's $5. What we find is it takes us right at 12 months to earn back the cost of the Herbie. They're about $60. So if we charge $5 a month for a second Herbie, it'll take us a year just to recover the cost of providing the.
Do we give them the second?
We're giving the Herbie.
They're giving it.
We're going to give it to them.
We're giving the second Herbie.
Right now, people are buying them and then they don't have a future cost. If they bought them inside of 12, the last 12 months, we'll work out a prorata type deal. If they already owned it and they've owned it for a year, if they want to keep more than one, they're going to pay $5 for the second one. It makes no sense for us to give twice the volume service at no additional cost since our cost increase. What were the key points?
You want me to just go over the?
Who's your?
Yeah, okay.
That'd be a big help to all of us.
All right. So I'm just going to go over every point, but the mayor's covered some of it already. The first thing we do is that we amend the definition of hazardous waste to include waste from portable toilets. And that's something that we've already done. We collect a franchise fee and we've collected that on portable toilet companies. But we've had a few question whether or not their waste is considered hazardous waste, even though the state says it is. We're just making it clear under our ordinance that it is. So as the mayor said, on residential garbage, the, the $15 rate is not touched. So if you have, if you have a single Herbie, it's still $15 a month, standard residential rate. But it, it states that there's an additional $5 per month per Herbie. And it limits it to three Herbies per dwelling unit. So one, one residence could not have more than three Herbies. And it does, in order, in order for us to recoup those costs, it does require that when you ask for that additional Herbie, you are required to keep that for a minimum of 12 months. It, it, as the mayor mentioned, if you, our current model is you buy, you buy a Herbie. And was it like 60, $60? 60, $63. If you've bought that within the last 12 months, then we'll basically prorate that. And I, I wrote it in here as a refund because I think a refund is a lot easier, a prorated refund than to try to say, well, we don't have to start paying it until 11 months into the future. That just kind of seems like too much to deal with. So anybody who came in and applied for a refund could get one, prorated. And again, it, it, it takes the existing rate structure for commercial Herbies from a classification-based system, which says if you're a church, you pay this much. If you're a school, you pay this much. If you're a grocery store, you pay this much. And, and wipes that slate clean and it says, instead, it's a simple matrix. And the top row of the matrix is number of times collected per week. And the side of the matrix is number of Herbies collected. So it gives, it gives commercial Herbie customers choice. And it, and it basically works out to a $10 increase for each weekly pickup and a $5 increase for each additional Herbie. So you can quickly and easily do the math on what you're going to owe. And as the mayor said, the current lowest rate for commercial Herbie is $22.50 a month. So this actually would, would lower that rate for a substantial number of customers.
For a single, once a week pickup.
For a single, once a week pickup of one can, that's right. And it also, it also limits the number of commercial Herbies to five per business. As opposed to the residential standard of per dwelling. It's five per business. But it also allows the Director of Public Works to limit the number of commercial Herbies per parcel. You got a lot of businesses that, you know, you have a strip mall, for example, that has six businesses in it. If there, there's 45 Herbies on that property, at some point you may, we may want to say to them, you think you need a dumpster. And since we're not in the dumpster business, we would be telling them, we're, we're no longer going to be your provider. You need to go find a, a private dumpster hauler. All right. So the current ordinance. And I, I believe it's been in place for at least a decade. The, the senior discount, the over 65 discount. The current language actually states that in order to be in, in order to get that discount, you're technically supposed to have, as opposed to the 96 gallon Herbie, you're supposed to only have the 65 gallon. The idea being you get the reduced rate because you generate less waste. Well, we haven't, we haven't been the best as far as following that practice. But what, what I did in the ordinance is to not change that, but state it more clearly. And also clarify that if you ask for the larger Herbie, or if you ask for additional Herbies, that you would go back up to the standard rate. And if you ask for additional Herbies, you'd also pay the additional $5. So I realize that there's a little bit of an issue, but my, my strong point is that, that the ordinance already says that it is not a change to the ordinance to take away this discount from anyone. It is simply a recognition that it was there and that we need to do a better job of, of following our own mandate.
From the council's perspective, anytime we change the way we have done something in the past, or we change enforcement of the way we've done something in the past, we tend to upset citizens. So this, even though this has been on the books, we have not been doing it this way. So if we follow our own ordinance, I just want us to think through the point that it will impact some senior citizens.
There is a requirement in the current ordinance that you must have during the times when your, your Herbie is not set out at the curb, your Herbie must be behind the front facade of your house. And then there's a, a sort of a, a window in which you must, your Herbie cannot be down at the curb. Or a window in which it is allowed to be down at the curb. So what I've done is, and stole the provision from Lexington, but you can apply. but you can apply, customers can say, you know, I have a medical condition that makes complying with that impractical. So, they could, they could call and, and apply for basically an exemption from that, that burden, if you will. So, it would allow them to, for instance, not bring their, if they couldn't bring their cart in till the, till the third day when someone who assists them comes by. Or if they're unable to wheel the cart down the steep hill that's in front of their house, that essentially what we're saying is...
We'll go get it.
We'll go get it. We'll walk up your driveway.
There's even another snow, though, that's all they have to do.
But only if you have your demonstrated condition. And, and, and I state in the ordinance that they should make every effort to comply when it is reasonable and practical to do so.
Andrew, can you clarify one thing on the, you mentioned about Herbies, their, their position, you know, when they're not in use. Can't be, I know it can't be in front of the house, is that right?
It cannot be past the front facade, so the front plane of the house.
Sometimes people put them in front of their garage.
Yes.
And that's technically not...
Technically not legal, correct.
Most FTOAs won't allow them to be in there.
No, I know. I mean, I've, I've heard a lot of issues about that. That's...
Used to be that...
How do we enforce that, though? Do we, I mean, do we ever, chief, do we ever have to notify somebody that...
I mean, I guess we would have to. If we get complaints, send them a letter.
Yeah.
Would be code enforcement?
Yeah.
It's not, it's not one of our more popular citations.
Yeah, I know.
We don't harass people about it on a regular basis, but...
Some of these houses, depending on where they're at, you know, I know, I know a little part of the colony.
Yeah.
They could, really, they ain't got a place to put it unless they put it right there in their yard.
Yeah.
No, they don't.
I think the issue really stems from, yeah, it, it's, it's leaving them down at the curb for too long, which is really, it's kinda handled in two different ways. You can't have it down there except during this time, but you also can't have it past, past the front of your house. And theoretically, this would enable someone to say, all right, I've got a, I've got a shrub out front that completely hides the, you know, the can, or a, a small fence, fenced-in area that's got, you know, nice, pretty plants growing around it. I could store that there inside that little cubby, and then all I have to do is walk down a bag of trash rather than trying to wheel it back. If someone had a medical condition, we would probably accept that.
Okay. At one time, there, there were, I can't remember if it was a daycare, but I think it was a daycare, and we can, we tried to help them. They had a dumpster, like many businesses have dumpsters. And when we decided to get in the Herbie business, we kinda promoted it, and we encouraged people to get rid of their dumpster and come to the Herbies. But they had an issue with, I think, the truck getting in and out to do the, to do the dumpster. Do you know which daycare that might be, or if, if any of those situations still exist?
Yeah, it still exists. It's the one at the church off the...
Church, yeah. Do they have more than...
Georgetown Development.
Yeah.
Do they have more than five Herbies?
No, they have, I think they have four or five, but we pick them up every day.
Okay.
That's how every day we pick them up.
That's the five that we... How will they be, how will they be impacted by this?
I have to check it, but I think they're paying dumpster rate anyway. So, I don't think, I don't think it's gonna affect them negatively. They, I have to look at the matrix. I don't have it in front of me.
But we'll still be able to provide their service.
Yeah. I mean, that's, right now, we only have, other than the dumpster, we only have a handful, four or five that we pick up every day. Most, most of our customers are one day, two day, or three day a week. Most of them are three day. And then, we have a handful that we pick up every day. I think they're already, they were already paying, so the matrix should be okay for them.
So, there is a section of the ordinance that deals with nuisances, and that's where it defines things like unlawful trash set out, or overflows, or, you know, a lot of times you see the move-out where the whole front yard gets filled with stuff, or the failure to properly prepare the can, or, you know, not putting illegal materials into the can, that kinda thing. It's, it's all dealt with in a nuisance section. So, this ordinance would wipe the slate clean as far as what the enforcement mechanism is and the penalties, and replace it with the code enforcement ordinance that we passed at the end of last year. It also, and that's for the, that's for the whole article, but as far as the nuisance provision goes, it's, it states that it is the default, unless otherwise specified in the ordinance, that is a twenty-four-hour remedy period. So, when it comes to, what we're saying is, when it comes to trash being set out improperly or strewn about, or just not done correctly, we, we consider those things to be important to the health, safety, and welfare of the community and, and demand virtually immediate remedy, twenty-four hours. And that's it.
Do y'all know, I'm sorry, go ahead, mayor.
Yeah, I just want, I, I think we have held off for future discussion excess garbage outside the can. We know that that's a huge issue, but prior council attempted to address that, and the administration didn't give enough education time, and that worked out to be a train wreck.
Oh, yeah.
So, we, we have not addressed that situation with this ordinance, because we know we need to give citizens a lot of lead time about that discussion.
Mayor, we also discussed that we were looking at maybe each quarter having maybe a pickup, a free pickup of left, you know, yard sales and stuff. Like, you know, at Christmas time, how you're overflowed. But we were looking at once a quarter, if you had some stuff you need to get rid of, we'd have a certain date it was set for. That's the day that it'll be picked up.
Yeah, like a week.
Yeah.
I think it's fair to say that right now, we're already accommodating most of those things. We need a policy for it, but typically, if you set out a couple of extra bags...
They get it anyway.
Three, four times a year, we're gonna, getting, you're not gonna hear about it.
Yeah.
The, it's the extreme cases, like we saw just yesterday, was it? Where the, the whole front yard is just full of the entire contents of the house.
Somebody moved and they just emptied it out.
Wow.
Or you get, or you get these houses that put out that much every week. Or, you know, we have some, we have a few that do that.
We have reason to believe that there's quite a few that, for instance, they'll have a landscaping business, and they'll go, and for a customer, they'll cut down all the shrubs in their house and then haul it back to their home and expect it to all be picked up by public works the next day. And, and call us. And ask them to...
These are things we're trying to get a handle on.
Yeah.
And I'm not making these things up.
It's not me, Robert.
It's not you, it's Marvin.
Hold on now, guys.
Sorry.
So, again, the committee is trying to methodically take the consultant's report and break it down into a series of actions for the council to consider.
And it's up to the rest of the council to make the decision if they like what we're doing or not, you know? Simple as that.
Sounds like you're doing a great job. Yeah.
So, if y'all would look that over, and we would, at the next meeting, have first reading of that ordinance, and then the committee will still continue to work on the report and, and bring other parts of it to you as we're ready.
I think the key thing for the beginning of this ordinance is that we're giving them a Herbie, even though we're charged, but we're giving them that Herbie. They're gonna have to pay for that Herbie anyway, and you said you've got one. Well, you'll get re, you know, worked on that, where yours won't be paying as much or whatever, but we're giving you that Herbie, and five dollars more on the month, and you get your garbage, you know?
What, what percentage of our customers have two? Do we have any idea?
I have to, I have to look.
Just ballpark, I mean...
That's good information for us to have.
Maybe fifteen.
Fifteen percent?
Yep. Not as many as you think.
No.
What we've had, the biggest issue we got is, we pay almost sixty dollars for them. We sell them for sixty-three, so we're not making money.
Right.
And then, you know, we had almost five thousand dollar worth of Herbies that people ordered and never paid for last year.
But they've got the Herbies.
And it's hard, you know, we gotta bill them separate.
Yeah.
Or if we add monthly, the monthly bill to the water company.
Yeah.
And if they don't want it, they can call us, we'll go get the Herbie back.
We're, we're, we've decided we're gonna, going into the Herbie repo business.
I would like to add that on several things, across the board, we've started demanding prepayment for things.
Yeah.
But particularly dumpster...
Well, why can't we just add it to their bill?
Well, you can, if they...
And we will in this case.
You know...
You mean the, the extra fee to buy it?
Well, the ones you're talking about that's not paid, the ones that has paid yet.
Five dollars a month, and...
I'm not sure we can do that on the water bill.
Well, since they haven't paid it, you don't have to worry about reimbursing them, so they just tax five dollars on. And you get it anyway in the first sixty, first year, right?
They've got two Herbies, you get the five, that's what I'm saying, it's the same principle.
The ordinance is written for those who have paid for a Herbie within the last twelve months, will get a refund.
Well, we're saying they're not getting a refund, but you can tax the five dollars, and they can pay for the Herbie anyway.
Well, that's just it, yeah, 'cause the five dollars would go into effect immediately. Theoretically, they will pay for it within twelve months.
Right, right.
So, you'll get it without having to repo it, or lock it.
Truckload of Herbies going down the street.
Yeah. Right?
Yeah.
I, I have several observations. I'd like to talk them a little bit about this before we go to first reading. On the residential Herbies, we put out the second Herbie out there to entice people to put the trash in the Herbie as, as an incentive, instead of putting extra trash out on the street. So, if we're gonna charge them more, we're gonna have more people that are gonna say, no, I'm only gonna use one Herbie. We're gonna get more trash alongside the Herbie on the street.
We're gonna get to a point where we're not gonna allow that, Chuck.
Okay.
Period. At some point, we must get to the point where we only pick up trash that's in a Herbie, or we cannot achieve the efficiencies of scale that we're gonna need to.
Not with those one hand.
We're, we're not ready to take that step yet, because we think there's a substantial public education component that has to happen.
But there are a lot of occasional situations where you have trash that won't fit in a Herbie. Large boxes...
And we're anticipating that through a structured four-time-a-year free set-out. But we're trying to get away from the idea of trash sitting outside of trash bags, because if, if it's just a Herbie, and we've got a one-armed pickup truck, it's very, very efficient. If, if because of set-out garbage, we have to send a truck ahead of them or behind them to pick up all the stuff that has been set out, we lose all of our efficiencies.
I agree with that.
So, we've gotta get to that point.
But keep in mind, I distributed a sheet of pricing to the whole council, and I believe you got one too, and Andrew got one, of what other cities are paying for trash pickup using private services. And it's as low as eight dollars and seventy-five cents a month for trash pickup. We're charging fifteen. So, if we're charging fifteen, we could offer a little bit higher service to our people, because we're, we're charging them more than they could have if we privatized. And if you take into the consultant's report, the thing we were losing money on, we've got it rid of. So, we're already gonna be in the black by getting rid of the dumpster pickup.
Not exactly. We have had, our residential rates have been subsidizing the commercial rates.
That's exactly what I just said.
And we're gonna...
We got rid of the commercial dumpsters that we were losing the money on.
Right.
We're gonna go into the black on the residential now, if we're charging fifteen dollars. We're gonna, we're gonna charge more than the fifteen dollars. We're gonna raise their rates, even though we're saving the money that they were subsidizing.
We're gonna raise whose rate?
Residential customers.
And it's still gonna remain fifteen dollars?
Fifteen, but the ones that have two are gonna pay for two now.
Yes, sir.
And, and I'm just calling, I, I have two Herbies, okay? We very seldom use two. But when I have that one instance where we have extra trash for what, some event, I'll set out two. But now, because I have two, I'm gonna pay for two all the time. And I'm thinking other people are gonna be in the same situation. So, now, I'm gonna have them take my Herbie back, when I only have one. I'm just thinking what everybody else is gonna do, okay?
Well, one week I put one out, tonight I put two before I came here tonight. Next week, I might just have one, but, but if I'm gonna get that, you know, I don't have a... Personally, it doesn't bother me, one or two, but she wanted two, so that's why I've got two Herbies, okay?
Right. What I'm saying is, we're gonna charge more for that, and we don't need to. We're already charging a high rate compared to what other cities pay.
I disagree with that, Chuck.
I, I gave you the printout. It's right there in black and white. The city of Nicholasville charges eight dollars and eighty cents a month.
If you wanna make a motion to privatize, you may do so.
Well, I'm, what I'm saying is, I'm not saying to privatize. What I'm saying is, we need to consider that when we're charging fifteen dollars and we're talking about raising people's rates.
We had consultants show us what a full cost-of-service model was, so that we could capture all of our costs and charge a rate that was fair, but covered all of our costs.
We found the consultant to be inaccurate.
Unless you think that consultant's report is completely bogus, how are we gonna cover costs?
We found that report to be inaccurate. They said we were losing two hundred and, how much was it? Two hundred and, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year on dumpster services? We did our own internal audit, and we were only losing a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year.
And Chuck, we did our own...
So, that, that report wasn't accurate.
We did our own internal audit, because we chose to do that. The administration chose to do that.
And I applaud the administration to do that, 'cause it found the inaccuracy in the report.
Let me finish.
Okay.
We felt like we had to do it, because they used an annual cost-of-service model that allocates costs just on a percentage basis throughout an entire operating year. We knew that we're not gonna fire people that work for public works that don't pick up commercial Herbies anymore, or commercial dumpsters anymore. We still need those people in our workforce. So, we knew that that number, if we elected not to lay off all those people, we wanted to see what we determined the true savings was. Now, if we wanna lay off those people, and we don't think we have enough employees at public works, we can probably get to that level of savings. I wouldn't recommend it. But I think we've, I think we took their report, and we, we made it cross-foot directly to our general ledger and confirmed that there were enough savings to take the action.
And I agree with you. I voted for that action, okay? We're gonna save that hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year, that the residential rates were subsidizing. They're not subsidizing any, but we're still gonna raise the residential rates. That's what I have an issue with.
Okay.
Okay. Now, when it comes to the commercial Herbies, I think the matrix is a good idea. One question I have is, how are we gonna manage the route with some people one, some people two, some people three? How are we gonna keep track of it?
That's gonna, that's what we're gonna have to look into. We, we can do that, just by areas of town, probably, you know, say, Monday and Friday's gonna be your biggest days for routes. That's when most businesses after the weekend will want their Herbies either picked up after the weekend or before the weekend starts. So, Mondays and Fridays, I mean, that's gonna be a challenge for us, but, but we can, we can do it.
Anything else, Chuck? Thank you.
Mayor, can I ask the chief a quick question?
Sure.
Chief, could you check on, like, the church that we were talking about that gets picked up? You know, however many times it was? I think you said five times a week?
Yeah.
What's their opinion?
That's daycare.
Um, daycare, which is affiliated with the church, yeah.
Right.
And what their rate's gonna go to?
Yeah, I'll find out.
You know, just to, just to kinda see. I mean, I understand what Chuck's, I do understand what he's saying. And the reason I do, over the years, I've been in a lot of these discussions, a whole lot of them. I remember one, the rates were four dollars a month. And I remember my first year on city council, somebody got upset, and they called me at home. It was a cold winter day, everything was iced up, and they didn't pick up garbage that week. They couldn't do it, and they wanted a refund. And I'm like, what's a dollar? You know, think about that. You know, and really, that's what it was, a dollar a week. Really, it's less than a dollar a week, 'cause there's fifty-two weeks in a year. Uh, and then we went to eight dollars, and then I remember, I remember passionately having to, I don't know, debate to get it to fifteen dollars. And that was, that was difficult, very difficult. And, um, and then we had the discussion about going to the Herbies and, you know, all the benefits that would come with the Herbies, which there are, there's a, there's a multitude of those benefits, cost-saving benefits.
Well, you know, it's, it's a lot, cuts down on workers' comp injuries, you know, grabbing a bag.
Same with that one-armed machine we got.
It's a lot cleaner and prettier, too.
Needle, you're right.
Needle stick.
The appearance of the neighborhood, there, there are so many benefits. And I guess I'm sitting here today, you know, looking back over the past twenty years on how bad it was compared to how, I think it, I think it's pretty good right now. I, I think the, the price is, is pretty fair, fifteen dollars. I think the service is excellent, and I think the aesthetics of it all is, I don't know how many times better it is, but it's, it's significantly better. And we used to have trash blowing all over the, the town. And Mayor, you, you remember, you were mayor when they were four dollars. I'm not, you know, so I mean, I, I'm not telling you anything you don't know.
If I'm hearing what you're saying is that.
And I'm not, I'm not trying, I'm not, I don't, I'm just sharing information with you, okay? Um, but there are benefits, and sometimes you have to be careful not to take something away. And I'm not, I'm not advocating exactly what Chuck's saying at all, and I, I, it, it's, it's an interesting situation because you kinda push in over here and something else kinda pops out over here, you know? For every action, there's an equal and opposite reaction. But at the end of the day, we are, we are so much better off today than we were.
The thing about it is, we're getting better every day.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I feel like this is going backwards, though. When we start giving the motivation to not have that second Herbie, you're gonna start seeing the same stuff happen again.
Well, I think part of that too is, and I, I, I think that was mentioned in the report, and I looked at my website. Instead of having the overflow and everything, allowing that every day, every week, they allow, like Marvin, we talked about it, once a quarter. You allow it, you don't charge anything extra, you allow for somebody to have overflow or, you know, two or three times a year we come, we can pick up, if you get a new mattress or you get a new a couch or a new chair, we'll come and get it with the gripper truck and haul it off. The big issue is the people that abuse it. It's not, you know, ninety-nine percent of our people.
We, we need to have something to take care of that, the abuse.
Yeah.
But for the citizens that use it on an occasional basis, we, we, and we're already charging them a high price compared to what other cities charge, why can't we give them a higher level of service?
Well, I, I feel like we do give them a lot, we do a lot of things that private companies want to.
We do now.
Yeah.
We're fixing on changing that. That's why I'm saying this.
Anyway, back, back to going, you know, when it was eight dollars and we, you know, that was a heck of a fight to get it to go to fifteen. But had we not done that, we wouldn't have been able to afford the equipment and the Herbies and the things that we end up needing, quite honestly, you know? I mean, that was just the reality of it. So, anyway.
Well, I'm, the way I see it is that unless I get an additional Herbie, I'm, I'm, my rate's not going up.
Right, right.
I'm paying, I'm gonna continue to pay. But if I, and because of, when I don't, the only time I have overflow is during Christmas, it's holidays.
But you have that option, if you, if you can contain it in one can, you're in great shape, you know?
But the other thing I do wanna say about our Public Works is that, that I personally like is that you get, uh, personal, uh, you get customer service. When you call out there, they're very willing to, um, help you, especially in property management and things like that, and, you know, and I've, and I've offered to pay. But it's because I have that opportunity to do that, helps me be able to keep my, my, uh, properties that I manage cleaned up the way that they should be, which I appreciate.
They already go above and beyond what they have to do. They go up and pick up these cans that sit alongside the house for some of these senior citizens, and they already do these kinds of things.
Yes, and I will say this also, I have had elderly people call me and tell me to leave Public Works alone. They have them hot chocolate on cold days.
Oh, yeah.
And they give them little snacks, have little cookies and stuff made for them, and at Christmas time, they give them gifts.
Right.
Because they're so appreciative of what they do.
That's a good point. My mom would tie little bags to the garbage, you know, and put bows and ribbons on them for the, for the guys. And quite honestly, uh, there was a time where she was in the hospital and she wasn't there and she couldn't take, I, I'd take the garbage can down every Monday night. Public Works was kind enough to drag it back up the street. Well, they saw that it wasn't there, and they thought something happened to her. So anyway, they ended up calling me to check on her safety, cuz they knew she lived by herself, you know? That was very personal.
Yeah.
And I, anyway. I'm very supportive of Public Works, Mayor, and I don't mean to delay this meeting any longer, you move on.
I, I just want, yeah, I just, you know, I like the personal.
There's a lot of history, I mean, there's a lot of things that have gotten us to where we are.
We've gone a long ways in several years.
And Chuck raises valid points as well. So we've, we've gotta break, uh, we've got one of those unusual three-week periods now between council meetings. So we've got time to reflect on this, and we'll pick this up again in three weeks.
And we'll, yeah, process it, make it into consideration.
If adjustments need to be made, we can make adjustments.
The right percentage of the people.
There you go.
Duda's got that printed out.
Thank you.
And maybe a plan of like futuristically, when you're talking about, you know, having the overflow and, you know, teaching the, the customers when that's gonna stop.
Well, Robert said he's gonna do some.
I put, I put, uh, about a thousand or fifteen hundred dollars extra in the budget. Proposed for.
Education on.
Education, to send some stuff out in the water bills and stuff.
I will be using two Herbies this week, cuz I forgot to put it out last week.
We'll get both of them.
I just wanna say that my husband does a wonderful job taking the Herbie to the curb and bringing it back up. Just wanna say.
He probably, you bragging on him.
Bam. Give him credit. Kudos.
Thank you for the, uh.
We can use all the credit we can get, sorry.
My, my worst mistake tonight was not giving Mr. Langford the courtesy of the podium before we went and talked about garbage.
We're sorry.
Bruce, let me, uh, move a thing or two on the agenda here and call up, uh, I believe you're here for the, uh, Giles property?
Yes.
Is that correct? If, if we could move down to item, uh, E and F on the agenda, uh, and we can get Mr. Langford, uh, to the podium and, and, uh, let him, let him go home. I think we've got, uh, the two actions are combined together. Uh, the first is a voluntary annexation ordinance, and the second one is the first reading of a zoning ordinance. So, Andrew, are you gonna tee this up or will Mr. Langford do that?
Mr. Langford will. Tell us what's going on. Mr. Langford, would you like to just briefly explain the nature of this project?
Uh, well, um, the project, assisted living facility off of McClellan Circle west of Etherwood subdivision, that's the Giles property, and immediately to the rear is the Snyder property. The two properties, twenty-five acres Snyder, almost ten acres Giles, are one project to be used together. As it happens, the Giles property is still in the county, but the Snyder property to the rear is in the city. So to make the project go forward, we have to have all the properties in the city. So we're asking to annex the Giles property, nine point plus acres, so that we can use the properties together. Then we're asking that the properties be rezoned to accommodate assisted living facilities or independent, uh, living cottages, uh, all a part of the project. So we're asking for a first reading on the annexation of the Giles property and a first reading on the rezoning of the two properties.
Could you explain which, what the zone change is, it's from, in one case, it's from agriculture?
Giles is A1 agriculture to residential R2 PUD, and the Snyder is R2, I mean, R1A to R2 PUD. Both wind up R2 PUD residential.
Both are medium density residential.
Medium density. And we got a recommendation from the planning commission, nine to nothing in favor.
Yeah, this is all consistent with the comprehensive plan and.
Consistent with the com- plan, yes.
So with that explanation, if you are ready for first reading of the annexation ordinance?
An ordinance related to the annexation of certain real property consisting of a total of nine point nine three six three four acres, more or less, owned by Ralph C. Giles Jr., lying along and south of the Georgetown bypass, McClellan Circle west of US Highway twenty-five and bounded on the east by Etherwood subdivision, and on the south by Snyder, adjacent to the city limits of Georgetown and Scott County, Kentucky. Summary, one, annexes into Georgetown city limits by written consent of property owners in accordance with KRS eighty-one A point four one two, nine point nine six three four acres, more or less owned by Ralph C. Giles Jr., lying along and south of the Georgetown bypass, McClellan Circle west of US Highway twenty-five and bounded on the east by Etherwood subdivision and on the south of Snyder, adjacent to the city limits of Georgetown and Scott County, Kentucky. Two, provides for an effective date upon passage and publication, publicly introduced and rev for the first time, May twenty-second, twenty seventeen.
Thank you.
Can I ask Bruce a question real quick?
Yes, sir.
Bruce, you've had, uh, meetings or, or the people that's in Etherwood, you've contacted all of them about this?
We sent out ninety-three notifications.
Okay.
Yes.
Cuz I've had some comments, they wanna know what was going on, didn't know until we, so.
We had about fifteen or twenty that attended the planning commission meeting, yes. They were mostly concerned with connections between.
Going into that subdiv- now, that was one of my questions, are we gonna be?
We do not, we, the applicant, does not, uh, care to have that connection made.
That was one of the biggest concerns, they didn't want that coming right into their subdivision, go out on a little roll back and forth, so.
And we're gonna revisit that at the development plan stage of the planning commission.
Just, ma'am.
An ordinance related to changing the zone for certain real property consisting of a total of nine point nine six three four acres, more or less, owned by Ralph C. Giles Jr., said property situated along and south of McClellan Circle and west of Etherwood subdivision, and twenty-five point nine seven acres, more or less owned by Richard and Connie Snyder, said property situated at two seventy Ether Lane in Scott County, Kentucky. Summary, amends the official Georgetown Scott County zoning map to show a change in the zoning classification for certain real property consisting of nine point nine six three four acres lying along the south of McClellan Circle and west of Etherwood subdivision in the city of Georgetown, Scott County, Kentucky, from A1 agricultural to R2 medium density residential, and twenty-five point nine seven acres situated at two seven zero Ether Lane in the city of Georgetown, Scott County, Kentucky, from R1A residential to R2 medium density residential. Provides for an effective date upon passage and publication, publicly introduced and rev for the first time, May twenty-second, twenty seventeen.
Good. Thank you. And that will constitute first reading of each of those ordinances. I can, I can say to the council that, uh, this development is very exciting for Georgetown. This is, uh, the developer is, uh, nationally known for these type of developments. It surrounds a development that's already full of health services and, and other things, and, uh, this will be a very welcome addition to Georgetown.
I wanna say Mayor Joe Kane, uh, from the planning commission is not here tonight, but he wanted you to know that he plans to be here for the second reading. If there are any additional questions, he would fill them at that time. He had a prior appointment, I said to him, it's, uh, not so important that you be here tonight, it's the next time.
Yes, sir. You're correct, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you.
May I be excused, Mayor?
Yes, sir. Your excuse, Mr. Langford.
Since you're a trial attorney, right?
I, I'm impressed. If, if we go back and, and pick up the agenda, item, uh, B under, under B eight, uh, we have a municipal order approving, approving a contract for the remodeling work at one twenty-five West Main Street. Did I say West Main? Yeah, I got Wes, Millie's got me thinking West Main all the time.
That's good, that's good. The work is done.
West Clinton Street here.
I'm brainwashing him.
Andrews worked so hard to get this project ready to bid. We've had pieces that were in the project and they've come out of the project. And I am so delighted that we're here tonight and we have a bid to recommend for, for your approval. John Shirley, we had a, a pre-bid meeting, had a, a number of contract, contractors show up. We got three good bids. Local contractor, John Shirley, was the, the low bidder at a hundred and four thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars. The contract is, is in your agenda book and, uh, just looking for approval to move on.
I'll make a motion, I'll second it.
Thank you, and second. Any questions for Andrew about what's in or out of that project? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Uh, we've also got a, a municipal order, uh, approving a contract with Isaac's Roofing and Sheet Metal for roof repair and/or replacement at City Hall. The cemetery house, which is the slate roof, uh, at the cemetery. Fire Station Three and Marshall Park press boxes and dugouts, these are all due to storm damage. And this is all gonna be covered by an insurance claim in the amount of ninety-four thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Motion.
Thank you. Motion's been made, and seconded, Ms. Early.
Mayor, can I ask a quick question? And I apologize, I should know this, but was the roof in the cemetery, the slate one, was it gonna be replaced? Totally replaced every?
Not for that price.
No, I, I think there's some repair work involved in that one, yes.
But it'll be obviously a similar, it'll be a slate.
It will have to be, yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll definitely go back with original material.
And it, it, uh, it has some age to it, there's no denying it, it probably be, needs to be replaced, but the damage done to it by the hail was not that extensive.
We, uh, Gina been, uh, Gina talked to us about replacing the roof on that for a couple of years.
You know, you, I just wonder, you know, I mean, would now be the time to do that, take some of the proceeds and apply it towards that total replacement? I'm just asking a question, uh.
We could.
Get a quote on.
Quiz the vendor on it.
Maybe it'd be worth inquiring.
I like the way David's thinking.
What would you all wanna replace it?
We don't know how much the proceeds are going towards that particular part anyway, do we?
Would you all wanna replace it with another slate roof or with just a standard shingle roof? I think that's the, that's the kinda big question that needs to be answered before we can bring you all information on that. Cuz that's expensive roof.
I go back to regular roofing.
Historical, too.
Price it both ways, and bring, bring the options to it, so.
Where is the roof repaired at?
Going into, um, cemetery.
Cemetery, the old house there. Yeah, I hate to see it not be replaced the way that, you know, historically.
We can find out. It might take us a little while to come back to you, but.
We'll be glad to check with that vendor. Would you all like to hold off on this until we bring that back, or?
You can still go ahead.
Unless those other projects need to be completed in a more timely manner.
I think, I think you, it's already been two years since the hail came down.
How long ago was this hail story?
Yeah, but we're, we're gonna keep going. It's whatever you all suggest.
There's, there is, there is no, um, urgency to it, there's no emergency, but, uh, I mean, we've bid it out, right?
We just gotta see, they probably only help the process for sixty days.
Yeah.
We opened it on April twenty-fourth, I think.
We probably need to go ahead and do this then.
I still think it'd be good to ask the questions.
Hold on, I ask you all to approve the municipal orders written. Then we'll get the additional detail and get it to you, and we will not, uh, issue, uh, a proceed to work on the cemetery house until we get to the information.
There you go.
That's good.
Is there a motion?
Yes, first motion and second.
So all we need is, all in favor, say aye?
Mayor, I have a, no, I'm sorry, anybody opposed, I'm sorry. I, I'm just confused about the HVAC.
Yeah, I was getting ready to go over that.
Okay, cool.
We had to skip over that because we opened bids today and we got none. So there was nothing to open, so.
Connie, that one surprised me. As many HVAC contractors as there are, and this is a significant job, this is probably a forty, fifty thousand dollar job.
Was it, wow.
And we didn't get a bid.
Not a single one.
It was on, in the papers, on the website, it was.
Well, you know, it is, well, they are, they are busy.
We got, we got no bids on the Ed Davis project, and we had to do it ourselves.
Ooh, I don't see us doing that by ourselves.
No, we're not doing that one by ourselves.
We will, now that, well, now that we've bid it, we've satisfied our obligation under the law, we can now simply go out and, and negotiate.
Okay, that's good.
So we'll have to bring you that contract back, and it'll be on a negotiation. So we'll have to bring you that contract back and it'll be on a negotiating basis.
All righty then, answer my little silly question.
All right, thank you Connie. Oh, and by the way, Connie was the sponsor of the two ordinance that Mr. Langford was here for. Well, Mr. Jason Whitaker. Come on up, Jason.
Jason.
You've been waiting your turn in the sun, haven't you? As you all know, Lieutenant Whitaker has stepped up to the task of operating our nine-one-one center for us and I can tell you that in the last year or so morale has turned around, it is a significantly happier place to be and that's what we call leadership. Also, I've let you all know that, that we're, that our dispatch operations are looking at a very significant radio overhaul over the next couple of years. This P twenty-five digital system that will greatly improve our communications. Lieutenant Whitaker, I'm not sure if you saw it or not, but Boone, Kenton and Campbell just announced that those three counties have gone together to do their P twenty-five digital system, nineteen point two million dollars.
Wow.
Well, Jason is here tonight, about six, eight months ago, all the emergency providers met with Judge Lesby and myself and we, we talked about the current status of our radio Jason played us some tapes, some actual tapes from our dispatch, our own dispatch office where police are on a high-speed chase and dispatch can't talk to the officers doing the chase and the officers that are trying to coordinate with the officer doing the chase and don't know where he, where he is and it's frightening to listen to those things and I think those are happening to us from time to time. Judge and I thought it important that we move forward with an evaluation of what our current circumstances are. So we have an MO tonight for you to approve that is kind of a staged thing, isn't it, Jason? We, we start with phase one?
Yes, sir.
But are we approving both phases of that tonight?
I just, um...
The needs assessment.
The needs assessment, so just the thirty-four thousand dollar amount?
Yes, sir.
Is what we're talking about tonight?
I think we, I think that, Stacy, help me if I've got this wrong, but I think we're, we're technically approving the payment of the thirty-four, but we did bid two different phases, so we have, we reserve the right to go and award those in the future and I think we asked them to keep them open for sixty days following the end of each phase, but I believe we would come back to council to ask for awards on the other phases. Is that accurate?
It would be permission for a notice to proceed, it'll be the same company. We're not going to do three different companies for three different phases. So it would just be a notice to proceed.
And as, as I recall, the county will be our full partner in each of these steps, is that correct? So this thirty-four thousand seven fifty-five that we're approving tonight will be a shared expense with county government. So I know only enough about P twenty-five digital to be conversationally dangerous. The experts are in the room, if anybody has a question about the study we'd like to undertake.
That little bit I read, it looked like TUSA are really, really passionate about what they do.
Would you like a motion, Mayor?
Yes, sir, I would.
Second.
Thank you.
It doesn't matter, but...
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the contract for consulting services for our nine-one-one system. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great job.
Thank you all so much.
At this point, we have first reading of the F fiscal year two thousand seventeen, eighteen budget ordinance sponsors Connie Tackett and David Lesby.
An ordinance of the city of Georgetown, Kentucky adopting the annual budget for the fiscal period July one, twenty seventeen through June thirtieth, twenty eighteen by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of city government. Summary, section one, adopts by incorporated exhibit the fiscal year two thousand seventeen, twenty eighteen budget of the city of Georgetown, Kentucky as follows. Governmental funds. Prior year revenues, three million four hundred and ninety thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. Revenues, municipal taxation, two million three hundred and fourteen thousand six hundred dollars. License and permits, nineteen million two hundred and thirty-four thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. Funds and forfeitures, one hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. Intergovernmental revenues, six million four hundred and sixty-one thousand five hundred and eighty-six dollars. Charges for service, one hundred and ninety-two thousand eight hundred and thirty-two. Other revenue, thirty-four thousand six hundred and eighty. Other financing sources transfers, nine hundred and thirty-four thousand five hundred and twenty-six. Total city revenues, twenty-nine million three hundred and eighteen thousand six hundred and seventy-four. Expenditures, general government, one million four hundred and fifty-two thousand one hundred and sixty. City council, one hundred and eighty-seven thousand two hundred and twenty. City clerk, two hundred and forty-six thousand two hundred and forty-nine. Police, six million five hundred and thirty-eight thousand four hundred and thirty-eight. Public works, three million six hundred and five thousand eighty-nine. Fire, five million six hundred and ninety-one thousand eight hundred and thirty-four. Code enforcement, two hundred and thirty-seven thousand seven hundred and sixty-two. Building inspection, five hundred and five thousand nine hundred and sixty-four. Dispatch telecommunications, one million five hundred and twenty-one thousand nine hundred and thirty-one. Utilities, six hundred and forty-five thousand four hundred. Community services inter-local, five million four hundred and sixty-three thousand six hundred and fifty-nine. Capital outlay, three million seven hundred and ninety-four thousand. Debt service, one million thirty-seven thousand two hundred and forty-six. Transfers to other funds, one million eight hundred and eighty-two thousand three hundred and seventy-two. Total city expenditures, thirty-two million eight hundred and nine thousand three hundred and twenty-four. Proprietary funds, prior year revenues, two hundred and sixty-six thousand five hundred and nineteen dollars. Revenues, sanitation, one million nine hundred and forty-five thousand. Recycling, twenty-nine thousand. Cemetery, two hundred thousand. Intergovernmental revenue, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and eighty-four. Other revenues, six thousand three hundred and thirty. Other financing sources and transfers, nine hundred and forty-seven thousand eight hundred and forty-six. Total proprietary revenues, three million three hundred and fifty-eight thousand one hundred and sixty. Expenditures, sanitation, one million nine hundred and eighty-four thousand three hundred. Recycling, three hundred and forty thousand five hundred and thirty-nine. Stormwater, eight hundred and eighty-six thousand eight hundred and eighty-two. Landfill, eighty-five thousand. Cemetery, three hundred and twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight. Total proprietary expenditures, three million six hundred and twenty-four thousand six hundred and seventy-nine. Section two, authorizes the mayor except as provided in the Georgetown purchasing policy adopted in municipal order eleven zero two eight to enter into any contracts or agreements necessary to fulfill the operation of city government within allocations listed in this ordinance. Section three, provides that if any section, subsection, sentence, clause or phrase of this ordinance is for any reason held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, such information shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Section four, provides that all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination in Georgetown City Clerk's Office, one hundred North Court Street, Georgetown, Kentucky, four oh three two four. All be introduced and read for the first time, May twenty-second, twenty seventeen.
Thank you, that will constitute first reading and aren't we glad we do that by summary? We will, again, we have three weeks before the next council meeting, any questions that you might have, we look forward to sitting with you and discussing this. Item B under finance is a resolution, we have passed these resolutions before. We know that this summer, we anticipate a significant infrastructure park at Lanes Run Business Park. We do not, we do not think we will borrow money to do that project, we think we'll use cash. But if at a future date we elected to borrow the money, this simply preserves our right to reimburse ourselves with proceeds from the bond issued for things like engineering that we're spending now. This is only if we choose to finance this project later. I've talked with the judge, they're on board to be our partner, they anticipate using cash and we anticipate using cash, so we have this resolution just in an abundance of caution. Please.
A resolution expressing the intent of the city of Georgetown, Kentucky to finance costs related to expansion of the Lanes Run Business Park Georgetown, Kentucky in fiscal year twenty eighteen, whereas the city of Georgetown, Kentucky, the city intends to finance the following capital project in the fiscal year twenty eighteen budget, expansion of the Lanes Run Business Park Georgetown, Kentucky by causing the issuance of bonds by the city, the interest on which will be excluded from the gross income for federal and Kentucky income tax purposes and whereas pending issuance of the bonds, the city desires to proceed with payment of the project's costs from existing available funds or other temporary financing sources with the reasonable expectations of being reimbursed for such expenditures from the proceeds of the bonds and whereas section one point one five oh dash two of the federal income tax regulations, the regulation provides that in the case of any debt or other obligations issued by the city to reimburse a capital expenditure previously made by the city in order for the interest on such obligations to be eligible for exclusion from gross income for federal income tax purposes, the city must not later than sixty days after payment of the original expenditure adopt a declaration of intent to reimburse such expenditure from the proceeds of the obligations thereafter issued by the city. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved by the Georgetown City Council as follows. One, the facts and statements contained in the foregoing preamble of this resolution, including the terms defined therein, are hereby affirmed and incorporated as part of this resolution. Two, the city hereby declares its official intent to finance through the issuance of bonds, all or a portion of the cost of this project which has an economic life of at least one year. Three, it is acknowledged and is the official intent of the city that the project's costs shall be paid from existing available funds or other temporary financing sources for the city prior to the issuance of the bonds and the city intends and reasonably expects to be reimbursed for such expenditures from the proceeds of the bonds. The maximum principal amounts of the bonds expected to be issued for the purpose of reimbursing the city for the project's expenditures is three million seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Four, this resolution is intended to and does constitute a declaration of official intent under applicable income tax regulations. Five, the resolution shall be reasonably available for public inspection during normal business hours at the offices of the city clerk, City Hall, one hundred North Court Street, Georgetown, Kentucky, four oh three two four. Six, this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon signature and recordation. Passing approved this May twenty-second, twenty seventeen.
Motion for the woman.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A lot of work for something we don't intend to use. Yes, sir.
You need to ask, any opposed?
Oh, any opposed?
Opposed. Can I explain that?
I'm confused.
Are you?
Mm-hmm.
Well, because I have no intentions of supporting a bond issue and even if we did have to do it, I'm willing to pay the cash for these initial expenses, so I just, no need to approve it for me in my, my side, so.
And, all right, next item on the agenda under human resources. When we had, when we presented the budget, we had the three salaries that we pulled out and had to deal with specially. One of those salaries, if we don't change the personnel ordinance, it falls outside of the grade level. So this ordinance does one thing and that is simply raises the upper level of pay grade eleven to the amount of a hundred and three thousand eight hundred and nine dollars. We're not paying a salary at that level, but this extends our salary scale to that point. Yes, ma'am?
An ordinance amending article four of section two dash one-one-one subsection C of the code of ordinances to increase the maximum pay range of grade eleven and the schedule of compensation. Summary, one, amends section article four of two dash one-one-one subsection C of the code of ordinances which sets forth the schedule of compensation to increase the maximum pay for grade eleven to one hundred and three thousand eight hundred and nine dollars. Two, provides for repeal of inconsistent ordinances, severability of provisions and an effective date upon passage and publication. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination in the city clerk's office, one hundred North Court Street, Georgetown, Kentucky, four oh three two four. Introduced to publicly read for the first time, May twenty-second, twenty seventeen.
Thank you.
Mayor, I don't know if this makes a difference or not, but in the budget ordinance, the address, it doesn't have, it says one hundred Court Street, not North Court Street. I don't know if it's a big deal or not, but just to bring that to Tracy's attention.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It does say that, then. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. It's not a big thing, but I mean, you know.
So it looks like next meeting, we're going to have a handful of second readings.
Better bring your reading voice on, Miss Tracy.
Okay, I'll do it.
And then, item twelve on your agenda, Robert has been working on the, you know, last year we, we used the reverse salt auction and it, it works well and the beauty of it is we're not required to buy any, but we can buy what we need.
Detroit Salt was the winning bidder this year. I got to do the MO so I can get it into League of Cities and CAKO so we can get a contract. We are, we have about two hundred thousand ton on, in, now, so unless we have a real bad year, we shouldn't have to buy much. I think we used about four hundred tons, thirty, four hundred tons.
And both our barns are full, right?
Yeah. We did buy about a thousand eleven hundred tons last year, but most of that was for, we got the second location from the county, we got one half of their old salt barn, so now we have two locations for salt.
Good.
So that's what law that went for, but the good news is this year we're full, so hoping for another mile winner.
This is just in case?
Yeah.
Now second the motion then for sixty-four thousand twenty, I guess, is that right, to Detroit Salt?
Yeah, if we take all twelve hundred tons.
And I mount up two.
Up two.
Is that your motion?
Well, or Connie, so I'll second.
She was first and he was second.
We're in agreement, like minded.
There you go. It, it's very straightforward and a great deal for cities.
Yep.
It's a...
Get it early.
Almost three dollars cheaper than last year.
Absolutely, that's good.
Kind of interesting, KLC and CAKO worked together on the reverse auction, so this is cities and counties getting the best deal in a reverse auction for that, so it's pretty good stuff. So we've got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you, Robert. Let's see, item thirteen on the agenda, we're getting close to the end, council comments and Millie, can I start that one, you're in?
Yes, the only thing I want to say is I had fun last Thursday at Ed Davis with the kids and Sharon and we planted vegetables.
That was a great pic, that was a great picture they posted.
Oh, I haven't seen it.
You were in it.
Oh, no. I'm going to have to...
You had been, you were planting and you, you were clearly in the picture.
Did you get the picture up? It was the good side.
Did you see it on Facebook?
I hope not.
Which side?
I'm just trying to encourage her. I volunteered.
Congratulations, that was a good thing.
The kids were excited.
Thank you. Holly?
I have a question for Chief Fossey, actually, how did the five K with Guts go?
It went great.
Good.
Turnout, weather was great.
It was awesome.
Did you do it?
I sure did.
He and Devin both did.
Wow.
I tell you what was the best part of the whole thing I've seen is the little boy that you helped through, what was his?
Boy, that was special.
I visited him this past year for Santa and it was, that little boy is something else.
I saw the pictures, chief, did you all help him through the course?
Yeah, he did almost every single obstacle. We had, you know, he helped him on some of them, but he was...
Little brother right beside him.
Yeah, little brother right there.
How fun.
Yeah. That was... That was Top Gun Auto, who sponsored the Top Guts Award for anybody that had a special challenge.
That was really nice of you guys.
Yeah, that's fun. That could be a good, it's a good money maker. People are Jimmy Quip and stuff like that.
Well, that's great.
Two things. Probably nothing we can do about this. Had a resident was complaining about AT&amp;T Internet. And he lives over on my side of town, and his internet is terrible. You get over on this side of town, it's a little better. But our side of town is just... His comment was, well, can the city tell them to fix it or we'll just take the lines over and let somebody else take it? I said, I don't know what we can do about it, but I said I'd bring it before council tonight. But the internet on that side of town is terrible.
Mayor, isn't that just service provider? I mean, that's basically what it is, right?
Well, he's called and talked, and he, it's, it's, nothing's happened.
It, it should be. If, if right now AT&amp;T told me it was sunlight outside, I would have to look out the window to make sure.
Well, that's it. Exactly right.
I, I have no. Now, we, we, we have lines of communication with lobbyists and folks that can. About a year ago, we were pounding on them every week.
Yeah.
It seemed like. And had them in our place. It, it's really disturbing.
AT&amp;T, there's, there's something going on with AT&amp;T because even like when people have them as a provider, I'll give you a, for instance, when you have a house on the market and they say, internet is accessible and the provider's AT&amp;T. Sellers don't know any different because they have existing AT&amp;T. They sell, you have a new owner. The new owner tries to get AT&amp;T. Oh, we no longer service that.
Yeah.
And one of the reasons they bought there was that they needed internet because they work from home.
So they don't service it?
No. They do not. They had to look for alternatives, but they didn't think they were going to have to when they bought the house. So I'm just saying that there's something going on.
And they're completely exempt from our franchise requirement.
They are. That's what I was saying.
Well, I just brought it up for him.
Cable.
And we'll, we'll make the calls we can make, Marvin. I just don't think we'll get much.
Well, that's what I told him. I didn't know what we could do, but I would bring it. And one more. You probably know Debbie Calvert. She lives on Clay Street. She talked to Andrew. You know, she's, she's got a C and I dog blind. And she walks down towards the school. And that dog has to have certain things on to walk across to be able to get her safely across the street. That's the only section in town that she has problems with, is right there.
The intersection of South Hamilton and.
When you go down towards, towards Georgetown Middle.
Yeah.
You've got to, that dog has to have some kind of markings on this.
Yeah.
Knows when to stop or whatever.
And that's the only part of town that, that she walks, that she can't trust that dog getting across the street properly. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I think Debbie's an amazing woman.
She is. And I told her I'd, I'd bring it up tonight.
She, she, you know, she went without a dog for a long time.
She went to New York for three weeks and brought that dog home and.
She's got one now and.
And that dog's ate every bush he's gotten in the yard up. I had to cut them down and, and, and grind the bushes out. But the dog's great. And she's, she, you see her all over town walking down. But she, that one intersect, that one section right there just gives her fits. That dog will not.
Is that an engineering kind of thing?
I think we can work on that.
Well, I told her we would bring it back and see what we could do, okay?